Good morning, everybody. I'm Don Swickert. I'm gonna call the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting to order on Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, about nine AM. To my left, I got Mike Steinis. To my right, I got Nan Flagle.
Morning.
I got Lisa from the auditors being IT as well. We got Luann in the back. We got Brittany from the press. And first up, we have Becca Fluhop with the public hearing for ordinance three eighteen for the heights rezoning. How we doing?
Good, how are you?
Not bad. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Have we received any comments on the rezoning of the property?
I have not. I haven't received any calls. I reviewed the information that I did have. Um, didn't have a lot of questions myself. I don't know if anything come about.
I have not received any feedback or comments. I don't see anybody logged online. I don't hear anybody here rendering an opinion.
So do you want to just go over it and uh? Call us where we stand?
Sure. Um, Mark is requesting a rezoning of his property located at three eight two zero nine, Highway fifty-two in Bellevue. He wants to rezone it from A one agriculture to R one residential. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow the applicant to divide the existing parcel and sell the portion containing the home re- while retaining the remaining yard area for personally.
So can you show me on there what we're looking at or what uh, where's the part of the part that he wants?
The one in the greenish blue.
I think what I looked at was two hundred and fourteen feet.
Would be to make the twenty thousand.
Yeah, that's right.
About right there.
So you'd sell off that portion?
This portion and I live just north of it, where the red is, I live.
Okay, so you wouldn't need an extra access or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
So the existing home there, you own that too?
I just bought it, yeah.
Okay, and so there would be two acres left there?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand square feet.
That's why we're rezoning it.
Okay. And if you get all of that, there's, there's what?
Forty thousand square feet, I roughly. Still not two acres though. No.
And then zone?
Egg down.
Zone the egg down.
So we're gonna do the whole parcel? And that's what our whole the hearing is about for the whole parcel?
Whole parcel, yeah.
So the whole parcel will go residential?
The
Or R one?
The two parcels will go R one, and that's why we have to go R one because it's twenty thousand square foot instead of the minimum for A is two acres.
Any other questions?
Uh, any other concerns from the zoning board?
Seven.
So that doesn't fall under like a spot zoning by changing that from A one to R one?
Yeah, I have a little further questions, I guess.
Well, I guess.
This is just north of Saint Danes, correct?
Yep, about a half mile.
With no other concerns or voices, anybody either here or online, no questions from the board, I guess I would enter the motion to close public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to close the public hearing regarding ordinance three eighteen for the heights rezoning. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we would look for possible action on the ordinance three eighteen.
Um, yeah, I would make a motion to approve the rezoning as re- as repres- as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve proposed ordinance three eighteen for the heights rezoning as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You go.
I'm making a motion to sustain the Robert's Rules of Order and waive the second public reading on.
Second and third.
I didn't know if we could do them both together.
You can.
Okay, then I would make it to do the second and.
Third readings for the public.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to suspend the Roberts Rules of Orders and waive the, the requirements and proceed with the requirements for a second and third reading, reading of ordinance three eighteen heights rezoning. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, we would then need a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance three eighteen.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve the third reading of ordinance three eighteen.
Huh?
Second reading of ordinance three eighteen, the heights rezoning as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I would make a motion to approve the third reading of the heights rezoning.
Third and final.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve the third and final reading of ordinance three eighteen for the heights rezoning as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Your resolve.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a good day. All right, while you're here, got a department update.
We had a zoning commission meeting last night, and it was the last meeting that Laura Parsons was going to be presenting the zoning ordinance update at. Um, we have a couple of things to take to the board of adjustment at their meeting on Monday. Um, some conditional use permit updates that they will be involved in, so the zoning commission had their approval um, for those, and then we'll be scheduling a public hearing for September twenty-second at seven PM.
And was there any significant changes in the previous draft that we had?
The previous draft from last night?
Thing that we got now, you know?
I mean, we had drafts of the ordinance, proposed ordinance.
That's been a few months ago, I think.
Well, we got two of them, although we got one a couple of weeks ago too, I think. I don't know, we keep getting them, but.
Yes, you're getting, yeah. Getting a lot. And it's not just you getting a lot.
If there are changes that are highlighted, I don't, not reading a hundred and twenty pages again, but after nothing changed.
Leads to a hundred and twenty pages each time.
Talked about where the public kind of taking out all the red red line and just presenting the clean copy to make it less confusing for people.
The red line is useful because then we can see.
You can see where the.
Where it's been, but then it's just so much too, so. Just being able to read.
It's repetitious also. If you read the part of it, then you go to the next. It's the same thing, but it reads without the, yeah.
True, yes, and that's the other nice thing about the new update is the repetition because it will, it tells everything that happens in A one, and then it'll tell everything that happens in R one, and some of the things are the same, but it's nice to not be like, is that R one in A one? So it's kind of nice that it just really flows together, so.
Good.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty excited.
The drawings happen with the setbacks, I think is a big.
Yes.
Big thing because like, before getting into any of this, I didn't know like, I always thought it would go like to your foundation. I didn't know it went to your E J.
The closest, right, yeah, and that's.
Where in the public, you know, general public probably don't know that. Construction people and that do, but.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the old ordinance just made some of the assumptions that people would know that or.
It was to the eve, then you added a six-inch gunner, now with that.
Yeah, and then she was talking about like your air conditioning unit.
Yeah, yeah, so many little things that somebody wouldn't think of, but now they don't really have to think about it because it's gonna tell them.
Yeah.
All of these steps, and yeah, I told Laura last night.
Website of the county website, you can click, 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 and it'll all be.
Yes, user friendly, hopefully, and you know, if it's not user friendly for the consumer, then it's easier for us to administer and help with the question.
Again, you know, I mean, you had egg and then you had residential, then you have residential in the egg and so hopefully it's dissected enough that people can really understand it.
So, yes, so much more and not hiding stuff in the definitions like Laura said last night that a lot of.
Not so much hiding, but hard to understand.
Hard, right, yes, and who would look in the definitions for the regulations that.
I mean, when I read the attorney's opinion, I can't read it. Well, I can read it, but I.
Can't decipher, yeah, really legally.
And I like the referring to the Iowa codes and not trying to recopy the Iowa codes in there because as we all know, when them change, then who's gonna be the one to say to go in there and make sure that it gets changed, you know, so it's just.
It's important to be coherent with the Iowa code.
Right, right.
In line with it, otherwise we're just fighting ourselves.
Then there's gonna be update after update and more emails.
And who's reading it, and who's got the current version?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah. Again, I, I would just like to pass my thanks on to the, to the commission, uh, the board, uh, for the work they've done there, and I know it's tedious and time consuming and could be hair pulling and, and so I, I appreciate the work they've done with that, yeah.
They really have been. Yeah, they get a lot of.
Laura's done a nice job.
I don't wanna lose volunteer because of it.
Yeah, and um, the inner departments that have been looking at their sections and.
Yeah.
Our county and caring and county health and, you know, they've, well, looked at their sections and given great feedback too, so.
Good, I'm waiting to, excited to see the finished versions in.
Yeah, without all the red.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I would just like to say anything going on within, uh, you've been a month at the helm, so to speak. I haven't seen any implosion down on that side of the courthouse.
I don't see no smoke rolling out the windows or anything.
Well, and that's been a lot of it, it's, it seems like there's been a couple of things that have come up that I look at the new ordinance and like, okay, how would this apply in a situation? We've actually made a couple tweaks with the new ordinance because, you know, we've had some things come up, so it's been, I don't have the thirty years of real life examples that Laura has had with it, um, so thankfully a lot of it is streamlined, but the things that have happened, I was like, oh, let's, let's spell this out just a little bit better.
I mean, it's really nice to lean, lean on that side of the truth, lean on Laura a little bit. We get the explanation and get, yeah, um, your name actually come up in conversation the other day with a gentleman, he was um, pleased with what we, what, what was going on and, yeah.
Well, then, yeah, keep the emotions down.
Both you and your, your zoning board have done a fantastic job, so the board of adjustments, keep it up, good job.
Thank you.
Any other updates?
I believe that, all we have for now.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we got visitors and citizens. I don't see, I don't see anybody online. I don't see anybody else here, so we'll go on, and next person I see is Jayden Shackle, county engineer. Come on up, sir.
Morning. Good morning. First item on the agenda is final plans for the Channelworth Bridge, so as long ago, all the right of way was acquired, all the additional right of way we needed was acquired. Uh, plans have proceeded and an order pressed hit in November letting, final plans are due today and they are now here, done, ready for door three's approval and signature.
Good to go?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the final plans for the five five F dash forty-nine, whatever that means, that's the number on the bed for the plan for the Channelworth Bridge replacement.
I would second that.
We got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve the final plans for SF forty-nine plans for Channelworth Bridge replacement with that bro CO forty-nine bridge, I'm assuming number.
And auditor or just?
The board.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good to see this come to fruition since this is one bridge we got too many dollars from the DOT for, so it'd be nice to see it come to fruition, yeah. Uh, next, there's just a couple of utility permits. Uh, first one is for MM EU uh, along two hundredth Avenue in the Macocata Township of section thirty-one, so it's just south of town here. Uh, they just are gonna bore new conduit for a high voltage cable, uh, going to generate drive, so meets our requirements on the permit as far as for electrical cables, the minimum depth. They have stated there, so, uh, it's gonna be right at the edge of the right of way so far from the road, so our department recommends approval.
Make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve MMU's directional boring conduit for high voltage cable on two hundredth Avenue, Macocata Township, second, section thirty-one. Any other discussion?
I guess before you do that, when you, you said it meets our minimum depth. I'm hoping that they're not just barely at our minimum depth with it being a high voltage.
Also, it's four, it's four feet, not just the thirty, and so it's, I guess, minimum depth for that type of installation because, for example, communication cables like your telephone fiber optic, they're typically at thirty inches, with this being electrical, they're going uh, four feet down, so.
Yeah.
Minimum for that type of utility.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next is utility permit, permit for Preston Telephone Company. Uh, they are boring fiber optic in the ditch of four seventy-fifth Avenue, Van Buren Township, section fourteen. I'm just going from an existing handful in the ditch to serve a new home at six six five five four seventy-fifth Avenue. Uh, our department doesn't see any issues with this one either, so we recommend approval on this one.
I would make a motion to approve Preston Telephone Company boring of fiber optic as presented.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve the Preston Telephone Company's request for boring a fiber optic ditch. Is it six six five five se- four seventy-fifth Avenue, Van Buren Township, section fourteen? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Updates.
So this morning, as we speak right now, uh, we have training going on with our excavator and mulching pad for the first time, so Altorfer's route are providing the training right now to our staff. Uh, who is Altorfer's?
Okay.
So.
The head's on the Rockdale?
Yeah, on Rockdale Road. Uh, we are also, we have a lane closed off for this using our new stoplight trailers as well, so I'm getting full use of this stuff and jumping at the bit, I guess, to see it in action, so I guess I don't know what time your guys' meeting will be done today, but I invite you, when your meeting is done, to stop on out and see it in action.
I'd love to see it in action.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna have to figure out a week. Well, I don't mind. See it in action. But again, yeah, they're, they're on Rockdale. We obviously, we said they're on Rockdale Road, so again, we just had some public not to make a congestion and coming.
Just for everybody's safety there.
Yeah.
And so I envision the first day, you know, it's not gonna be, everybody's new to it, so it'll be a little slow, but what I envisioned, but that's okay, but just excited to finally see it. Another thing, come to fruition, I guess.
Yeah.
Um.
We like to see. Maybe slow going for the posterior.
We like to see bottlenecks improvements and, and move forward. That's with the bridge and with the equipment that we, um, make the decisions to purchase for a reason.
Yep.
And
All right.
All is positive for Jackson County.
Now, if we could just get it to quit raining three inches every other day, we'd be okay.
Now, be careful what you ask for.
Yeah, as I'm saying. Last two years of this time, it's too dry to reclaim or whatever, and now, you know, we'll take it when we can, because, uh, you know, and we got overhitched last night really quickly.
So we're good.
We're out of, it got really windy too at my place.
Mother nature.
We're out of the drought, I think.
I hope we are. So, yeah, that's all I had.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Be a little later. What do you think? He'll show the hustle back. He'll show it with him now.
Oh, you can go if you want, or.
I can, yeah, I can, you know, um. So this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Make that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to approve the minutes of the April twelve twenty twenty-five board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
All right.
Any other discussion? Don't want to interrupt the phone call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the signatures on a handwritten warrant to AT&T Mobility for sixty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents to correct the vendor being paid.
Simple.
I think, I think someone, some of the departments entered their own claims, um, and when this claim got entered, someone picked the wrong vendor number.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to approve and authorize a s- signature on a handwritten warrant to AT&T Mobility for sixty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents to correct the vendor payment. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the July ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Alright, that motion.
I would second.
Got a motion by Nan, second by Mike to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for July ninth, twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion?
Just to note that, uh, they did come in under slightly underwashed, so that was the test.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I know that we previously had asked for a public hearing on September second, uh, for a budget amendment, but I'm act- actually, after looking at, um, we believe that our server, or I, or AIDS four hundred server is actually getting end of life. So we would like to, instead of having the public hearing on September second, we'd like to actually have it on September ninth, and we need to include that money because obviously, just like everything else, buying a new server is not cheap. It is not budgeted. So.
Auditor server courthouse.
It's a whole courthouse server.
Good.
So we're gonna spend some money to replace that. Um, so that's why I'm asking today for a motion to approve setting the date of September ninth, twenty twenty-five at nine AM for a public hearing to amend the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
So do we need to resend the original?
Well, that was the question. We didn't know since, I mean, I'm just asking.
It's public.
It hasn't been, it has not been published yet.
Okay. Well, it hasn't been published yet.
It has not been published yet.
But I would include that if you want in a motion.
Heard to include the resending of it and.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion to resend, um, the previous public hearing set for September second and to approve the September ninth, nine AM public hearing for the, to amend the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
I would second that.
Got a motion by Mike, second by Nan to resend the public hearing scheduled for September second at nine AM to discuss pu- uh, the pub- for the pub- public hearing for the budget amendment for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, and then approve the date of September ninth, twenty twenty-five at nine AM for the public hearing to amend the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget. You got that?
Hmm.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so prior to that, we will get information as far as what we're looking at and what are.
Always working on that, yeah.
Was this expected or unexpected or?
It was potential. We were told that it might be end of life, but we weren't sure how long after December thirty-first is now what they've told us is the end of life, so we weren't sure how long it would last after that, so now we're worried that we need to.
Given us bits, I mean.
So who's they when you say they? Is that IT or is that?
IT, Bjorn, Bjorn and I, but we also have solutions too.
And that's right.
They have us, but they also are our partners, and they've been talking with IBM, so.
So is it capabili- can make, you know, do they, is it comparable or is it out of, uh, its updates? Yeah.
There are no more updates to this server. We can't, we can't update the server anymore. Um, there's no patches that they can put on, and our, um, tape drive is, I believe, thirteen years old, and we've had two new servers since we got that um, tape drive, so we need to also replace that, so.
I guess my thought process is when you give me the date that somebody said something that the end of life would be December, so that's still in this fiscal year, so maybe we should have maybe ended that on.
Well, we weren't sure whether that was, um, a set in stone. So, but we have since found out, yes, it is.
Okay, so it's basically kind of like Windows when they say we're not supporting seven or ten or whatever anymore. They're just making it obsolete.
Yes, yes.
So, okay.
Totally by anyone.
You.
I think.
In the age of recycling and reuse and be friendly.
Yeah.
We're not gonna fix that anymore, given.
This is a lot more expensive than the last one. Like three times. Yeah.
Well, keep us informed. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That's all that I have for the minute today.
All right. Kelly, you wanna do your part while you're here?
Sure. Um, I am under the impression that Julie came in and, um, a month ago, maybe?
Yeah.
And at that time, she had told you that she was resigning from ASAC.
Or resigning.
Yeah, and, uh, so we need to, with the, we're, we're just finishing up the seventh year of the drug grant on September twenty-ninth. So with Julie Fern's resignation, we need to come up with somebody to replace her for, as the program coordinator for the grant, which was through ASAC, and ASAC has declined to continue our, the contract with them through, for the drug grant, so we need to find out, we need to decide whether we want to, um, find a new program coordinator and contract, find someone to contract for ASAC services, ASAC-type services. Um, and we just received notice this morning that we did officially get the drug grant for this next fiscal year, so they renewed the, the grant award. Um, so that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, yes, oh, sorry.
So per? Per year?
Per year, per year.
That includes the salary?
That covers everything for Julie and for all of the activities, uh, the conferences, the supplies, the, the compliance checks.
Looking for job line?
No, I, 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 you know, and I'm just thinking about this because, you know, I'm not picking out a county, but I read the Telegraph Herald every day, but, and I know in the last six months, they've had several articles about this very drug grant and such, and they heavily involve public health.
That's who is normally the, the grant writer or the department that um, uh, applies for the grant, and that's who we went through was, uh, the board.
This is actually Frank.
Frank, yeah, Frank started this. Frank Freeburke was the one that applied for the grant.
Okay, no, my question is then, is Elizabeth involved? Does she have a input on this? I've spoke to her before.
Or desire.
And she, she does not have any desire to, she doesn't understand why the board of health is involved, and I said, well, it's.
I wonder if we got to Lene.
That's interesting because the conversation I had one time was a little different than that.
That Elizabeth wanted to deliver.
I don't know that, um, I think her thought was she should have some input because public health should have some input, what, where, how, you know?
Well, once the, unfortunately, once the grants awarded, then we're, um, required to follow the, the grant guidelines.
Okay, so are you making a proposal of some kind here that we look for, um, an individual? Is that what you're talking about?
I'm giving you information that we need to, you, if you want to continue with the grant, you can continue with the grant or you can decline the grant award. Um, if you choose to continue, then you need to find a program coordinator and somebody to replace ASAC as our, um, services provider.
Why did ASAC decline to be our services provider? They just didn't want to fill Julie's position?
No, for sure.
That was that contract that they sent, yeah, they, that letter that they let us know.
And Julie was working for ASAC and through her job at ASAC, she was the program coordinator.
So they're just choosing not to fill that position?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, honestly, I, I don't like the idea of giving it up. You know, if we have some programs started and some things that we can sustain, some education, whatever it may be in the schools and whatnot, I, I don't know where this takes us, like you said, who or what or where to get involved. Um, you know, is it law enforcement? Is it, uh, um, yeah, I don't know, is it public health? Is it, it's?
This is something that we had in the preparation for, so.
No.
I think maybe we need to do a work session or something in the next week or two to kind of figure out how or where we can.
Same to be having, yeah, or no? I mean, you said we approved this morning, so.
We are approved this morning.
For five years, correct?
Three, three more years.
I kind of wish.
Yeah, well, we started five years uh, almost two years ago, so we're in the second half of the ten-year grant.
They approved the next three years?
Well.
Or is it just?
Year by year basis is they award it. They actually officially.
Fund it.
Fund it.
Year by year.
Yeah.
It was awarded for.
And there was concern that they, with the way the federal government is right now, that they were not going to fund this particular grant, but they did. But they did, apparently.
Alright, so we're gonna, can't make a decision today, so we just have to figure out, I think we should talk to Becky to see.
And I did talk with Becky and I said, asked if the program coordinator would, could we contract services for that person? And she said, yes, as long as we are not telling that person what to do, what hours to work, where to work or whatever, then we can contract services for that person. They would not be an employee of the, of the county.
Yeah, so that's it. We need to have a work session, you know, I'm thinking EMS and I'm thinking law enforcement, I'm thinking a lot of different things that might entwine here.
Well, and I, I did talk with Julie before she left about whether Laney Birkin would would work. Um, I don't know how, if she has enough time.
Well, she is, yeah.
Yeah, so but uh Julie thought that, yes, she would. If she did.
Okay, well, maybe even have some ideas or something, yeah, or somebody or coordinator, uh, Karen Walls is involved in this too, correct?
Karen Walls is the program director, she's the one that signs off on on reports and stuff and submits claims. She was going to be.
Yeah, no, I I think you're right, Don, we need to get uh whoever's involved here in a, in the round table.
Why don't we plan a work session after next meeting? Cause if the, if it doesn't look too big, we're gonna, we need to.
Well, we need to, unfortunately, need to get going on it because the, this current year ends September twenty ninth, so we need sooner, better.
We'll do the best we can.
Okay.
So, I mean, whatever our deadline is, I think, yeah, obviously, I think we need to approve it and we'll beg it work. I I honestly think we can make that work with maybe a couple of heads or a couple of combinations or whatever it might need.
Yeah, maybe it won't be just one person.
Yeah, it could be a combination of one. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, with the amount of work they do through the schools, you wonder if there's a way we could tie it with the schools to see.
Part of the prevention coalition.
Even, yeah, like the school nurses and such. Alright, speaking of the devil.
Thank you much.
Well, thank, thank you.
We have Ruth from Veterans Affairs, come on up. Tell us how everything's going this morning.
Things are going well, um, I did something a little bit different this time due, but I'll go through kind of my normal stuff then. So we had fifty seven in-person visits uh this last month of July, um ninety five phone calls. We filed a lot of different forms, as you can see, and we had nineteen decisions were made in July. Um, as of July, there were seventy five open claims, um, and we were responsible for seventy six of those, seventy six percent of those claims. So we had four hundred and nineteen veterans and eligible family members receiving eight hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars in June. So that was kind of a nice, nice little jump there. Um, I went through and I did the some fiscal year information, just to give you guys an idea of what what we, all the forms we filed in the year, so this is this little blue one right here. Um, so this shows, you know, in, in the last fiscal year, we did eight burial benefit claims for veterans, seven dependency claims. Um, two veterans' pension claims, eight healthcare claims. You know, the uh DIC, those are the benefits for survivors of um, of veterans, we did seven of those. Uh, fifty five disability claims, seven survivor's pensions, twenty supplementals, ten higher level reviews and fifty six intent to files. Um, I think that intent to file number is important because that's, that's our placeholder. When a veteran comes in and says, I wanna file something, but I don't know what I wanna file for, right? We do the intent to file, we have that placeholder. Um, I think this really shows that we aren't losing those. You know, we're really, the majority of our veterans, we are, we are making sure that we reach out to them before that intent to file expires and saying, hey, do you still wanna file something? Are you coming in? Um, and I think with all the claims that we have done, I think that's a really good kind of indicator that people are coming back. Um, that we're getting those intent to files.
To me, that's a, a, a great indication of how well you're getting the word out and making people aware, cause as a vet, talking to vets, it's amazing how many times they don't even realize they can.
Yeah, and we, and we still do have that, you know, we still have people come in that have never been in the office before, um, but I'm glad they're coming in. So just some kind of fiscal year information, um, for fiscal year twenty five, we saw an average, our average was fifty people every month. Um, on average, we answered ninety one phone calls a month. Our busiest months for in-person visits were July and August, um, and that was sixty eight people that we had, um, both in July and August. Um, our busiest month for phone calls was November, um, and we had a hundred and forty five phone calls that month. So I just think this is good information to keep even year to year, so we have an idea of how, you know, how we're doing, what we can improve on. Um, so I hope to present that every year to you guys. Um, we, I did an article on veterans' pensions, so that went out. Um, that's a one that a lot of our veterans don't know about until they're entering a nursing home. So, but even if they are low income before that point, they are eligible, um, there's obviously eligibility requirements, but um, they could be eligible for that pension, so I wanted to get that information out there. I also wanted to let veterans know about pension poachers, that's a big deal, um, they these people reach out to our veterans who are low income, they say, we can help you file this claim and they charge for it. Um, and they also can sometimes give veterans bad information about, you know, don't report certain assets or things, which can really negatively impact the veteran in the end, so we don't want any veterans to be.
Deceived.
Right, yeah, yep. Um, so the articles are now going to be in Bellevue, Herald Leader and Preston Times as well, so we'll have them out there. And we also participated in the back to school event at the drive-in, which sounds kind of funny, but we have a hard time reaching our younger veterans. So I thought, you know, hey, maybe you will run into some of our, our younger veterans there, um, and we did, so that was good, you know, any, every few you can catch and, you know, at least get, get your.
Well, I think some of them don't think about it until, you know, that's something for those.
Yep, that's. That's very true, yeah, they just, they're, they're busy living their lives, you know, they, they have a hard time even getting to their doctor appointments cause they're working all day and they got kids and, you know, so just kind of letting them know, hey, we're here, we're happy to meet with you whenever, whenever you can and we can do a lot through email now with our new um system, we have a secure portal that we can send claim forms to, they can sign them, it comes back to me, we can submit them all electronically, so, yeah.
I really heard some good things about that event, actually, it was some people that were out of town that come.
Yeah.
Heard they had people from Illinois and whatnot.
At, at the back to.
Uh, at the drive-in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the back to school event was, was very, very busy, yeah, they had a lot of people there and a lot of resource vendors and, yeah. Yeah, that's all I have unless we have questions.
You know, just rough numbers, when you say four hundred and nineteen ve- veterans are getting in a, in a month, say eight hundred and twelve thousand, you know, you think, I, I mean, simple math tells you that's about two thousand dollars a month.
Actually, it's about nine forty, nineteen forty.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, the numbers are, you know, different, but on average, yes, yes.
Yeah, some may receive more.
Yeah, some may have more, some may have less, but, you know, yeah, we're.
That's a good.
It's a constant infusion in the Jackson County.
It is, it is, and it's tax-free dollars, um, which is always, always nice, cause they get to keep all of it and then, you know, spend it as they, they need.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you too.
Next up, we have Jack and Laney for Disability Services, come on up.
Morning. How we doing?
We're doing good, we had um our governing board meeting yesterday, um, of course, we're just wrapping things up, trying to get things all um, squared away. The budget for the region, uh, we still have just over a million dollars in the budget. Um, we do know for sure, we've got at least six hundred and forty thousand in bills to be paid out yet. And there'd probably be a few that trickle through, but as of right now, it's projected that we will have a little bit of money um, at the end um of all this, when all the bills are said and done. Uh, the good news, uh, the mental health advocate that we are sharing with our five counties, they submitted their first bill to the ASO and they've already reimbursed them at a hundred percent, um, so I know that was kind of a concern, cause they never did say if they were gonna reimburse a hundred percent or not, and if they did not, then it would trickle down to the counties to um pay for what was not covered.
Another good thing we heard is that the ASO is paying for jail meds. So the county doesn't. Um, I would assume.
July first?
July first, they should. That's the mental, mental health jail meds.
Correct.
Not all, not all meds, correct.
So the jails can start um submitting that to the ASO for reimbursement.
Okay.
So, I assume our jail administration are aware of that?
Yes, I will verify, but they should.
We still see on play, you know, we just need to make sure if we can recoup some of that.
No, I mean, sometimes some of that stuff goes undetected unless you tell them. You know, I mean, they're busy and, and really, that, that, when did that bone infect?
Yeah.
Couple months ago.
Yeah, and that would, um, yeah, it's a July one.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying, you know.
Correct, yes, yes. Do the meds still get filled locally or do they have to be filled? Some places.
As of right now, it can be filled locally, um, they're supposed to submit bills as they um were prior to um, things not being done. Now, that doesn't mean that in the future that they might change some things. Correct, cause as um time and thing going on, we see that they're, they are um kind of trying to streamline things. So there is a very real possibility that they might select um a provider that they want the state to use as a whole. But as of right now, it's not one specific.
Well, I mean, just so there's not a delay, you know, I mean.
Right.
Obviously, some of this come be pretty quickly, I would think, and you have to have somebody local to be able to.
Yes. Correct.
And it may be that they do, you can get your first weeks at a local provider and then the rest has to come through the mail or whatever.
Right.
And as of right now, that's not the case, it can stay local, but there's always that possibility, cause with some other um, services, I know that they are trying to just streamline everything, so that might be something they look at in the future and it might be something they don't touch and just leave to the uh, local communities to decide what works best for them.
Good, yeah, if you'd reach out, definitely like to. Be like, hey.
Amen.
Sure. Um, and then the other thing that they did discuss about, so there's um a twenty E with the DAP um, that they're looking for the counties to join and sign each, you have a representative with the DAP. Uh, so that is something that they did talk about at the meeting yesterday. And uh, the, on that governing board for the DAP, uh, you would be able to have oversight over personnel and um grant approval, so that's just something to kind of uh, might be beneficial, just to keep our foot in the door. We still have to um have that twenty E approved, um, and kind of look into that a little bit more. But we just wanted to kind of see what exactly they were looking for, so just wanted to put that up there.
Next, they said each region will have a, uh, uh, each county and they will have a region, um, from their county on a regional governing board. Which I didn't know they were gonna carry through with that, but each, each county will have a representative on that board.
So will there be a, a DAP or disability access point in each county? And is that a funded position or is that just a, an assigned extra duty or?
As far as I know, it's just an extra duty, right now, it's not an actual funded position.
Sounds like, like it could be a pretty laborious man involved.
Especially if you're talking about oversight of personnel and that type of thing, yes. So I think that there's still some questions, uh, Julie Davis, she's the one that kind of is heading up the DAP. So um, I've reached out to her as well and see if maybe we can't get her to come to a board meeting and kind of talk about it a little bit more to help answer some of those questions.
Well, I was looking through some of it, I guess I was thinking is like, my, are they gonna have somebody in the county that kind of serves as the access point to help with this and help the programs and connect and all that stuff, cause to me, that sounds a lot like what we have you for.
Correct.
And is that something that they're gonna, if they're gonna pay for meds, is that something that then we can get reimbursed for, for maintaining or is that just? You know, that's, that's kind of where I'm like. But they.
Unfunded mandate.
You know?
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's good questions and I understand, um, where you're coming on, from on that and I get that. Um, I don't know with the DAP as of right now, they've uh have different locations where they've got people stationed. Um, so there is, there is supposed to be a presence in Jackson, um, but there's no um set hours. At some point, there's supposed to be set hours, but um they're still working on hiring folks. So I don't know um when that will be and how often that'll be.
Good.
So as a whole, how this is transitioning, do you feel it's uh seeming to work? I mean, I've heard some behind the scenes grumbling that now they're realizing what, what the directors and.
What everybody did.
Everybody did, and they're second guessing themselves, and I've heard this from others that were in the business and now are not in the business anymore.
Well, you never really know until you get into it. And I think what you're saying is probably very correct.
It's kind, kind of like a lot of jobs where one person maybe does a lot of things and they leave and now we hire two people to do the exact same jobs or three people to do the exact same jobs as what?
One was doing, but Laurie kind of said yesterday that when people are, are contacting the ASOs they are following through, the ASOs are following through with the, their requests or their concerns.
Good.
Well, keep us informed, I was, like I said, I was that DAP thing, I got that email yesterday, I was trying to read through it and then you get that one attachments, a hundred and twenty pages, and I'm like, I'm gonna wait for the Cliff Notes on that one. Cause by the time you get done reading it, half of it's probably gonna change or be more defined, you know?
Yes.
And I just curious, I mean, how much have you interacted with Julie Fern through that drug free grant? Have you, have you worked, any, spoke with her at all with that or have you been interacting with that?
So I was a part of the meetings I would go to um that she had and whatnot. And she did involve me a little bit with the um, the planning of that and um some of the reporting, but she, she did the bulk of it.
So we're planning a work session maybe here soon or, go ahead, Don.
I was gonna say, we'll have to talk a little bit about it, cause with the changes in that program, we're, we're, we're having to pick up some pieces, so.
Okay.
Um, with that information you have, maybe you could be a part of it, so.
Absolutely.
I think maybe next week, depending on how the schedule looks, we might have a work session to kind of see where we stand and where we're gonna go from here.
Well, honestly, we, we will not, we will not have a director and to move forward with the funding, um, we will need to, what we're, oh.
Gotcha, okay.
Any thoughts, so maybe even the back of your mind or even anyone else that may be involved or want to be involved? So we have, have a round table and.
Figure it out.
Okay.
Plus, I, I guess we need to figure out what we can do. You know, do you have to hire a person or can you divvy it up a little bit and maybe talk to the schools and get part of that money for somebody to serve as like the student portion?
Some people that work under Julie that.
You know, and, and, you know, so maybe you don't have the one person doing it all, but we can kind of section it out a little bit and uh.
I mean, yeah, we were talking, you know, EMS services, what, you know, could they be involved, could law enforcement be involved too, uh, this much or this much, whatever, whatever.
Sure.
Need.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ideas, so.
Alright, I'll get.
We'll keep you informed when that work session happens, but.
Maybe even if you have a minute, maybe just touch base with Julie too, this, give, get her thoughts.
I sure will.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else good from the state?
Well, according to um Laurie, when we were at the meeting, they were talking about all counties administrative service management for fiscal year twenty five, twenty five, that um Jackson County will be, will be receiving for underpayment of fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety one dollars and ninety cents.
That's wonderful news.
Put that in your books.
What's that for you?
It's a, they said that it's an overpayment. It's a, they said that it's an overpayment that's um, the region has, that they have to reimburse.
Administrative services.
Oh.
So, yeah, there was.
That was nice, I'm like, yeah, you betcha.
Doesn't it have to be put in any special fund, I mean, every, so, does it say where it goes? It doesn't, because the region is nowhere anymore, so then it should just go into.
You do use our network.
I mean, honestly, they should give some kinda direction of, yeah, what we can use it for.
Yeah, well, and supposedly it's kind of um supposed to be just overpayment, so it's supposed to be money that they owe us back, which I'm not sure.
Appreciate it.
Another thing that they talked about is that, um, and I'm gonna hopefully, hopefully find out a little bit more about this. Next week, when I go to Des Moines, um, they've gotten rid of nine thousand integrated health homes. And these are programs um are being eliminated, and these are intensive care areas. Um, and I don't know why, um, why they got rid of them. But I'm hoping at the H H S council meeting next week, um, I can find out some information on that.
Nine thousand?
Nine thousand of them.
That's the I H H um folks, so they did intensive case management with folks, uh, and I could.
So is that the same type of housing that imagine the possibilities for doing with two or three of their back homes, or whatever you wanna call them? That's the same type of?
I would say s- maybe.
Yeah.
So not necessarily, so um it's not just the housing, it's more, um, so some people might be in their own homes.
Sure.
Too, and some in those types of homes, and they just received high intense um communication and oversight through the. I H H with their case management services, and so now all those folks are gonna be going to their M C Os. Um, or through the D H S or H H S um targeted case management system. Where they're not gonna have um the high intense case management, it's gonna be, you know, the, those folks who work in the. M C Os and for H H S have higher caseloads and can't um, won't have the time to. Uh, provide these individuals that high intense regular.
We're kinda drawing back them a little bit as far as.
Watch over, giving somebody else responsibility.
Yeah.
Well, keep us posted and updated and.
And they are not having a meeting in September, the next meeting of the board will be on the twentieth of October.
Yes.
They gonna let the dust settle or something for a while, is that the intent?
They were, there was some, some issues with the, with the counties.
Well, it, it was that, and then also, um, the next uh billing cycle. Uh, I believe uh the timing of it would have been right around that next meeting, so there wouldn't have been much to report in regards to the budget yet. Cause they wouldn't have everything processed, so they wanted to bump it back, and they decided just to bump back to October.
Well, okay.
Keep up the good work.
Hopefully, if we have a, a meeting next week, that we wanna discuss something, that you might be available.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, Jack.
Luann?
Morning. Good morning. All right, calendar for this week is full. Um, one thirty this afternoon is a safety committee meeting in the committee room for Nin. Excuse me, um, and I, I, Mike has an Isaac's executive board meeting in Des Moines. Um, this afternoon, they moved that time up to three o'clock, did you see that?
Um, there's a couple, there's a, there's two other groups meeting at three, ones is three to three fifteen and then three to three thirty. I think ours is actually at three thirty, we start our executive board.
Okay, I put that agenda in your book.
Yeah, no, I have all the, I have all the times.
Okay, um, four o'clock is a virtual aging and disability town hall meeting by Zoom for any of you. And at five o'clock tonight is the conservation board meeting in Hurstville for any of you. Wednesday, August twentieth, um, is also, and I should say, the Macocata downtown assessment is going on today. And tomorrow, um, tomorrow, on Wednesday, um, is the first day of the Isaac conference. In Des Moines for all of you. Um, at one P M is a Mississippi Valley workforce board meeting, a full board meeting, um, scheduled um for DAP and quarter by Zoom for Don. And at six o'clock tonight is the first of the water quality listening sessions at the Macocata Brewing, which any of you could attend, I don't know. If any of you are going, but Thursday, August twenty-first, um, is still the Isaac conference in Des Moines for all of you. Um, from eight to ten that morning, they scheduled a Jackson County um emergency planning committee meeting at the hospital. For any of you that want to attend that, nine A M that morning is a housing trust fund meeting by Zoom for Nin. At six o'clock that night is Limestone Bluffs R C and D by Zoom for Don. And second of the water quality listening sessions at the Macocata Brewing is also Thursday night. Friday is the, Friday morning is the last um part of the Isaac conference in Des Moines. And I think only Mike and Nin will be there on Friday. Monday, August twenty-fifth at four P M is an early childhood Iowa meeting in Dewitt by Zoom for Nin. And at seven o'clock is a board of adjustment meeting in the committee room or by Zoom for any of you. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth at nine A M.
So this uh meeting Thursday at the, is that something that just come up? Could I know, you know anything about it, or?
Been on that.
It's good, have this a normal meeting.
This is continuation from the COVID thing, right, with me.
Yeah, they kind of, everybody from the county.
Look for urgency planning.
Everybody, pharmacists.
Roundtable?
Yep. Kinda go, go around and you, you got issues, got things going on.
And they run a drill, no one then too, right?
Yeah.
The same group, or a disaster drill.
I know, from a long time ago that it was, wouldn't probably all Des Moines.
Right, right, and I told, um, and that, since she would not be here. Um, the only other bit of business I have is the county attorney has made um their appointment to the civil service commission. Um, they've appointed Russ Long, and in the letter that they sent me, they had appointed him to a four-year term. And I talked to John and I said, I think it should be a six-year term, and he agreed with me and he looked at it again, so. The expiration date for Russ Long's term is actually August thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven, so I'm waiting for a corrected letter, but. That's what I have.
Do, I mean, there's this one.
I kinda scratched out them, but that's what John sent me, he said it was a four-year term. And it's not four-year terms on the civil service commission, it's six. And he wasn't filling a vacancy, so it's not even a shortened term, so after I talked to John, he agreed with me that it's a six-year term.
So he's not filling a vacancy, so it would go past twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, I'm like, that's only two years.
That's only two years.
Six years would be thirty-one.
Okay, my apologies.
That's where I do math.
I got bad, yeah, that's, my math is apparently bad today, sorry about that.
Yeah, it was like, what, six years, that's two years.
Looking at two different things while I wrote down the number, sorry.
Were you looking for action on this, or?
Um, you, I'm doing your approval, I don't sure if he needs approval, it's his, it's his appointment, but it's. Yes.
I didn't know if we had to accept it, instead possible action.
Um, the twenty-seven, I think, is the next time you have to make an appointment to the civil service commission, I think that's what I was looking at. So, maybe two of them event, so.
Cool, anything for the way?
No.
Thank you.
Right, you have any problems?
Have you uh have any contact with DIPRAS as far as coming up with terms, do we have better terms in that contract?
I got a message this morning from, um, Shelley. Atchison, who works up there, and she said we typed up the contract.
I assume we did.
Well, I, I didn't have anything to work from, so, but I'm gonna work with Shelley, she's got different software than I do. And she thinks she can take what we have and make it editable, so I can adjust it and.
Well, I don't think we're changing a lot, and other than uh the insurance requirements and, and. Yeah, I mean, the numbers were the same, the dates, yeah, I mean.
Right. We have. Are you typing up the contract, or we are?
Uh, we will be.
That I would like, I mean, John's got a standard form that he likes to use.
He said he doesn't have one for services, he has one for leases.
The old contract.
Yes, and we, it's a PDF, which I can't adjust, but Shelley's got V I D O B software, and she says, she thinks we can open it up, so I can.
We have to do a lot of adjustment, other copy and patient and.
There's people in the courthouse that can convert that.
Right, right, I think Becky has that too, so.
Well, let's get it, let's get it approved.
Uh, I, I would, yes, we need to draft, yeah, because I, you know, we are, yeah, it's already expired, so we need to move forward. I, I assumed it was our responsibility to draft up the contract, I think we did last time, but.
Yeah, that's what I couldn't find a copy of, but um at least it's got different, I was aware of what the new insurance requirements are, and he didn't. Say anything about it, so, but I will get that typed up.
Or get some help with it, whatever we need to.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Work to commissions.
None for me. Everything's good.
The Macocata River Water Management Association, we are finishing up our sampling, we sample from forty-five different spots three times a year. Uh, they're finishing up their sampling, they're getting a little preliminary data back, but mostly the data doesn't come back. Until uh February is usually when they release what they find and all that kinda stuff, so. That's moving forward, workforce development, we did vote, and as far as I know, we combined with the South Central Iowa. Um, workforce development district, and that's gonna become one district. Again, northeast was good, they didn't get included because they didn't know if they could get everything done in time, but that's still a possibility. Um, so that's moving forward, um, that's all I got. So.
To move further, I make a motion to adjourn.
I would second that.
You gotta motion my mic, second mine in to adjourn, any other discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a wonderful day, stay dry.